Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February fifteenth work session called work session today here at two o'clock. I'm going to ask Commissioner Offended to lead us in invocation. Commissioner Repolsky in the pledge. If you all please stand.
Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we come before you for wisdom, discernment, love, and peacemaking for our community. We pray for the outcomes of justice that's being worked through our system in our community and in our nation. We pray for things in the world, Lord, where there are concerns with Russia and its intentions and the disturbance of oil peace. We pray for each and every citizen here in our county that would experience good health and wealth and peace and love. And most of all, grant this commission understanding of the things they need to do for the good of this county. In Jesus' name, amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one is to receive an update from the Golden Isles Development Authority, Mr. Ryan Moore.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I am Ryan Moore with the Golden Isles Development Authority. And first of all, wanted to tell you that I appreciate you allowing me to reschedule. This time last month, I was supposed to be at a work session and we woke up in North Carolina where we were vacationing the day before and our driveway looked like that picture on the left. So we were stuck for an extra day or so. We made the best of it, but I can say for sure, I'm glad that I live on the coast. After digging my car out of the snow with a shovel, two and a half hours later and getting out of the neighborhood, we're blessed to live where we do. So really appreciate y'all's flexibility allowing me to come back.
Those kids look like they're really suffering in that picture.
By that point, they probably were. Yeah, I think they're glad that they live on the coast, too. Just a few updates. Wanted to start with some project activity that's occurred since we last met. SCOJET is an existing industry. If you'll remember in our McBride Industrial Park, we've been working with them for the better part of two years on their future and how they wanted to expand. And we're excited to announce, and this is an announcement from a few months ago, but they are going to move forward on a new building in our North Glen Commerce Park. The initial rendering was about sixty-six thousand square foot, looks like that. It'll be a little smaller than that, a little different, but they have gone through site plan approval and that project is moving forward. So they'll put about a five million, six million dollar investment in the ground, create about fifteen new jobs, and bring some more commerce to the community. So we're very, very excited to work with them, announce this project. Look forward to that going vertical very soon. They're on a tight timeline. They expect to have that constructed by the end of next year. So we're working with them to make sure that they stay on track. I mentioned that McBride Industrial Park is where they are currently located, just to orient you to where all of our properties are. I mentioned several of them. McBride is south of the airport. North Glen Commerce is north of the airport. And East Gate is east of the airport. But that'll give you an idea of exactly where those properties are. Drilling down a little further to the McBride Industrial, I'm sorry, to the SCOJET project, this is our property at North Glen Commerce Park. SCOJET will take lots one through six, which are on the north side of Innovation Drive. We've already had those parcels assembled. That's where the location of their new building will be. And then we had originally intended a spec building on that site. We pushed that program south of Innovation Drive, and that spec building is now planned for lot twelve and thirteen. So we've had to move some things around, but we're in a good spot. We're moving forward on two different developments in that park. Current tenants of that park are Omega Air and TB Warehouse on lot one and lot six, I believe, the very bottom right parcel. But anyway, so a lot of activity in that park, two construction projects, hopefully moving forward here real soon. When SCOJET moved out of their building, obviously, that creates an opportunity. And that's kind of where this started. Second Harvest Food Bank operates in the McBride Park as well. Their current facility is that top blue marker, and they are in about a six thousand square foot facility. They received some ARPA funding to expand their facilities. And thanks to the county for working with them to receive that grant, they'll be expanding. The most advantageous way for them to do that was basically to move down the street. So we were just in the right spot at the right time with two different industries looking for their next building. Second Harvest will buy SCOJET's facility, which is around forty thousand square foot, and invest another two million dollars roughly into that facility, creating a commercial kitchen and some other things. So an exciting development there. We'll have an expansion, Second Harvest moving into a much larger facility, freeing up SCOJET to move to North Glen Commerce Park. Revisiting the Warehouser deal, if you'll remember, this was a piece of property at three forty-one and Perry Lane Road that the county owned. It was a former Georgia State Patrol facility, licensed facility. It'd been dormant for some time. All of the buildings had been razed, so it was a flat piece of property. Corner lot, Warehouser came to us and they were looking for a spot for their regional headquarters. They've got about forty employees that work in their current facility, and they wanted to be west of ninety-five so that in the event of a hurricane, generally, the western side of I ninety-five is not evacuated. So that was a project driver. And there just wasn't a lot of opportunity, available properties for them to move to. So we got with the county early on and quickly moved to put that property back into productive use. The ultimate result, Warehouser is now on the verge of getting their construction permit. So they'll be going vertical here really soon, but that'll be around the eight thousand square foot regional headquarters. They're going to put over a million dollars into the property. And those forty jobs that could have easily gone somewhere west of this community are staying right here in Glen County. And it's going to be on a great location, on a corridor that really needs some investment. So a beautiful building, really excited about that. But I just wanted to make sure that we went through the timeline here. This project really didn't start in earnest until the beginning, January of twenty-one. And by September of twenty-one, we had done everything that we needed to do to give Warehouser everything that they needed to build their building. It was a quick timeline. In about nine months, the county, thanks to the commission, voted to dispose of the property. We executed MOUs. The property was rezoned within a month of making that decision. Engineering started. We would have been able to deliver that quicker to Warehouser, but we found some contaminants on site. There was an underground storage tank that used to hold gas for the Georgia State Patrol. Some of those contaminants were still on site, so we quickly went through the process of putting that property into the brownfield program, remedying soil. We removed about an Olympic-sized swimming pool's worth of dirt out of the site and replaced it with clean soil, and basically gave Warehouser the keys in September. So nine months, that was quite an engineering feat to get that property back into productive use through the brownfield program, remediated from a soil standpoint, and allow Warehouser to close. So we did close on that in November, and they should go to construction here in the next, hopefully, two or three weeks, as soon as they get their construction permit. So very quick process, a lot of moving parts, but certainly moved quickly. And Warehouser's response to us at one point was, you guys got to slow down. We can't keep pace with the county. And anytime that a private sector company tells you that, that's a pretty good indication that the people you're working with, Aaron, Pam, at the county are doing everything they can to keep this thing on track. So really appreciate all that y'all did from the staff standpoint. We couldn't have done this any other way. And I don't know that there's very many other counties that could have done this this quickly. So appreciate your partnership, appreciate you being flexible in how we executed this, and hopefully, we'll have a really good product on the ground within the next six to nine Another announcement coming late last year, Semrise is located on Colonel's Island, chemical company there, a global company, but they make fragrances for different household chemicals, perfumes, colognes here in the Golden Isles. And they needed another unit. They were currently buying part of their inputs from elsewhere overseas. They decided to invest in the Golden Isles on their site. They put about twenty million dollars into the ground, created four new jobs to operate that unit of their business. They came to us early on and said, look, we're competing against Jacksonville and Charleston, where we have other sites. We need to make this the best proposal that we can. So we worked with them on a bunch of demographic information, gave them every reason that they needed to be in Glen County, and also did a bond issuance to help make that investment make sense. Corporate level is very happy. The local company is very happy with the process. And we're hoping, given that they have several, about two hundred acres on Colonel's Island, and a lot of that is still developable, we're hoping we're top of mind for any new investments that might come. And we've been in discussions, hopefully, this is the first of several phases that will be built out there, and we can continue to attract that new investment. Workforce is a hot topic of conversation, not just within our world, but everybody's currently, with the shortages and stoppages and low unemployment rate that we're seeing in the community, everybody's talking about what's next from a workforce standpoint. We certainly tried to get ahead of that curve as much as we possibly could. Going back a year and a half ago, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and created a strategy to take the community forward and execute on maybe some of the gaps or additional activities that we could be undertaking in workforce development. So what we're going to pull up now is the strategy document. And this is just a one pager, really boiled down. The strategy document was much larger, much more robust, but this was the outcome. And in year one, we ordained an implementation committee, and we took on the eleven tasks in year one. I've been saying that there were ten. Ralph, there's actually eleven. Anyway, I'll correct myself from here on out. But if you look at those year one goals, launch a Golden Isles teacher and counselor externship program. That's been done. The Chamber of Commerce took that role and has done an excellent job. We now have an externship program where teachers from all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, teachers and counselors are getting into businesses in the community. So we've got teachers that have gone to work at the hospital, King and Prince Seafood, Sea Island, really opening their eyes to what careers and opportunities exist in these industries. And it's been really successful. The teachers love it. They get to see things that maybe they don't on a daily basis. And the industries are also learning a lot about academia and how things work, and the value that we have within our K through twelve system. So a great outcome there. A career coaching pilot program in Glen County schools is in process. Advocating for capital funding to support the expansion of the Coastal Pines Technical College campus in Brunswick. I know everybody's heard a lot about this, and it's been the number one priority for the chamber for two years now. Coastal Pines Technical College is really a key asset in our community. They are teaching our students, young people, not just young people, but adults in our community, technical skills that they can use to get a job. It's really tailored to the positions and opportunities that exist here locally. And the building that is on their campus currently doesn't have the lab space that they need. So if you want to go learn how to weld, work on a car, or be in a biology lab to learn certain nursing skills, a lot of that doesn't exist within our current system. So we've been advocating for that second building to create the lab component, which is really the hands-on piece of this learning that we need for kids in our schools. That money obviously comes from the state government. We've been advocating for the funding piece, which is about three million dollars for a couple of years now. And we're trying to push that. Right now, it's very pertinent because of the legislature being in session. Hopefully, we'll get that money, the planning dollars come, and then the development dollars follow. But a critical piece to our workforce ecosystem here locally. Inventory makes strategic investments in our partners. We've done that. We've created the Keep Glen Running Job Portal. That's a job site that aggregates data from fourteen thousand different job posting boards around the country and boils it down very simply to the jobs that are in Glen County. And it's real. It's not, there's no advertisement, there's none of this clickbait where you go on a job search website and you're clicking through to who knows what. These are real jobs locally in our county. Great resource for people looking for jobs. Obviously, was a big part of getting people back to work during the pandemic, but in these times, it's very important as well to get the message out for employers about the jobs that are available. The network, workforce development network is in place. We've began the implementation, which are these eleven outcomes. We continue to market, and we'll be developing an annual report here now that we're at the year end. Entrepreneurship, we've made strides in that. We've created an entrepreneurship mentorship pilot, if you will, in conjunction with the College of Coastal Georgia and the Downtown Development Authority. The idea is to put successful entrepreneurs together with fledgling entrepreneurs and make sure that they're having conversations about how to move their business forward in the most appropriate manner. And we've developed a formal training program for those mentors to make sure they have the tools that they need to communicate with these new entrepreneurs. So a lot of activity, we've executed on our year one goals. We're moving into year two. Georgia Power gave the authority a grant for thirty thousand dollars that will be used to hire a coordinator for all of this. We've gotten to the point where it's kind of a critical mass calculation, but we need somebody to take this on and run with it. So we're analyzing how best to do that right now, but certainly appreciate Georgia Power for their grant that will go towards getting this accomplished. Internally, the Development Authority created the Keep Glen Running message a couple of years ago now. We continue to push that out. It's very important. This goes out to over ten thousand students every year, this message generally, different means, via face-to-face interactions. We send paperwork home with the tenth grade students annually, and we're in different activities at the school, just making sure that our kids are hearing from the industry the availability of jobs in Glen County. We want to make sure that every one of our students has an opportunity to stay here if that's what they prefer. In that same vein, we've worked with the College and Career Academy to make sure that non-traditional jobs are very apparent and very, very top of mind for all of our students. So in this particular instance, This Girl Can is a program that places female students into jobs that are traditionally not held by females. Welding was a great one. We had a great process. They spent time metalworking, welding, and they do that in conjunction with a parent or a mentor. But they get their hands dirty. They find out what the job's actually about. And during that process, they learn about the opportunities that are available here. So it just broadens their horizons on what they might think is possible for them, which is so important in today's environment. I know everybody's seen some of these statistics. It's in the papers all of the time. But our civilian workforce, the people working in Glen County in 2020, we had thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifteen people going to work every day. In two thousand and five, we had thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four. So from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty, fifteen-plus years, our workforce hasn't grown. It's stagnated. That's concerning. I don't know if it's sustainable. That's probably a question for somebody way above my pay grade. But certainly, the less people that you have working, supporting your economy and your community, you have to start to expect more of your workforce. And I just don't know how long that can last. There are fifteen hundred and fifty-seven less children sixteen years and older in Glen County than there were in 2010. So over ten years, we've had a decrease of almost nine percent of our student age population, kids under sixteen. So I don't know, if you project that out, does that trend continue? How long is it sustainable? How many people can we support in the community when we continue to lose workforce? So it's an interesting dynamic and certainly makes the efforts that we're undertaking with the Chamber of Commerce and others. Every student that's in our K through twelve system now, we need to make every, we need to try as hard as we can to keep them here. We're not attracting from outside, so we need to do a better job of keeping those that we have, making sure they don't leave. And if that's the best that we can do, that's a step forward. But certainly, we need to talk about how we can attract more of a working age population as well. And you see the unemployment rate, two point four percent. That's below the natural rate of unemployment. There's an argument that there's a certain amount of unemployed people that are necessary as people quit jobs, leave jobs, and find new jobs. Generally, that's thought to be somewhere between two and a half and three percent. So at this point, the people that are unemployed are really just transitioning from one job to another, and we're not, we're not, we're not growing. So at the authority, we have one of our key results for the year is to continue to find ways to grow our working age population. So something that we're astutely aware of and continuing to look at. From a marketing standpoint, one thing that we're proud of, that we announced at the end of last year, is a new brand for Trade Winds. If you'll remember, we've got seventy acres that we own near exit forty-two on the west side of I ninety-five, and it abuts six hundred and eighty-nine roughly acres that are privately owned. and it abuts 689 roughly acres that are privately owned by a corporation called WEDA out of Miami. We've renewed that partnership. We are recommitted to the site and we've rebranded, so that now when people look for property in Glen County, they're not looking for 70 acres or 690, they're looking for 760. And it's all assembled. We've got one master plan to show that. And obviously, it just, it's a lot more impressive when you can work together and partner with the private sector to have a good plan to go forward. So, now we're marketing this as one total track. Just to give you some scope, building number 12, as it's shown on that plan, is about 1.25 million square foot. So, quite a bit of opportunity on that site, even with relatively low density, we can get a lot of square footage and a lot of opportunity. So, we're going to continue to push that message out, rebrand the entirety, the entire track will be the TradeWinds Tech Park. We've got a website developed that is tradewindstechpark.com, specific to the site. We've already begun to push that out. It's already gone out to over 200 project managers, site selectors, and brokers. The next step in this process is to hire a common broker. So, we're in process on that and we're close to having the entire site listed by one common broker. And shortly to follow after that will be common signage across all of the different sides of the property. So, signage along 95, 99, and then also on the Golden Isles Parkway. So, really excited about that. Common branding, common master plan, common signage, and a standalone website to direct people to so that they can get more information on the site. So, a lot of work has gone into that and we're really excited about the path forward. At the basis of all of that was really redefining our relationship with our neighbors next door and our partnership, and we're all recommitted to the site. The company out of Miami has been great to work with and we're all moving forward together, which is a good thing. Just to sum up some of the things that will be coming soon, we've continued to invest in wetlands delineations of the airport. We've gotten about half of that done. If you'll remember, the definition of navigable waters of the state has changed and it depends on the administration. We took advantage of a change in that definition recently to redelineate the non-aeronautical property to the north of the airport. We finished about half of that work on the eastern side of that property. We did free up quite a bit of developable property, so the $100,000 that was spent on this delineation will get paid back very quickly through available developable property. So, that was a very positive outcome. We expedited the eastern side of that. We've got a project that was looking at this site. We'll finish up the western side of the property here really soon and have that delineation ready to go for whoever decides to come invest in that property. I mentioned the spec building that we've got in design and engineering. We did have to pause that for a bit until we figured out exactly what Scojet was going to do. We've gotten past that and we pushed the program to the south side of Innovation Drive, but we were planning and engineering a 33,000-square-foot building, speculative investment, and we're already seeing a return on that investment. We've sourced three or four projects that need a similar-sized footprint that we're talking with that may end up being the tenant before we ever have to go to construction. So, good opportunity there. We're very excited about moving forward with that. One thing quickly that I'll say, there are some changes happening with the Georgia Ports Authority that hopefully will result in some more traffic to Brunswick and the Golden Isles, Colonel's Island, and Brunswick Terminal. We're working with GPA now to find out what the ultimate result of that will be or the impacts will be, but we feel going forward, we're going to have a lot more opportunity to attract some traffic and also some investment in manufacturing plants here that will need access to either the Port of Brunswick or Colonel's Island. So, big opportunity and we're trying everything, we're doing everything we can to stay ahead of it and plan for the future. Few announcements, we do have another expansion of a McBride tenant. They are voting on that this month and hopefully will consider it next. So, should have another 40,000-square-foot or so expansion. We still have several large projects. One in particular is looking at the TradeWinds Tech Park property. We've signed an access agreement with them for them to go do some due diligence. It's moving forward. So, we continue to work on that and hopefully, one of these larger ones will land. And then lastly, wanted to thank the board for the letter of recommendation for Ronin Fiber, which is looking at Glen County as a possible place for investment in a fiber network. Been working with them for a little while, and should they be able to move forward, it'll be a great opportunity to give businesses in the community and residents another, another option for fiber optic connectivity. So, very excited about that and hope that happens here in the near future as well. So, just to sum up, I think the big thing for us is that, just accounting for projects that are committed, we expect about 150,000-square-foot of new building to occur prior to the end of the year, or at least be started prior to the end of the year. So, a lot happening and appreciate your time. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, if you have any questions, you can please call Brian on your own. We've got a pretty stacked agenda here.
Ryan, I want to introduce you. I see a couple of your board members and one of your staff out there.
Thank you.
And Ralph.
Ralph Staffens with the Chamber of Commerce, and Sherry Pruitt is our existing industry coordinator, does a great job with our existing industries. Thank you, Sherry, for all that you do. Mr. Jack Kilgore is the chairman of the Development Authority, and Mr. Bill Austin is the vice chair. And certainly thank all of their, thank them for all of their work and the hours and time and dedication that they provide to the authority. I feel like we take advantage of it from time to time, but certainly appreciate all that y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all y'all do for the community. Thank you all. We're going to go ahead and keep moving this, moving forward because we have a lot to do today. We received a update on the infrastructure bill from Monica Harden. Monica?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, commissioners. Monica Harden, grants coordinator for Glen County. Tamar asked me to give you a presentation of a summary or overall perspective of the infrastructure bill that passed November 15th in 2021. U.S. Congress passed a $1.2 trillion bill to help rebuild federal, state, and local infrastructure, which would focus entirely on transportation, three aspects, transportation, climate, energy, and the environment, and broadband. Next. So, the entire bill, again, centers around these three main aspects, but the fund distribution, while I was reading and going into the literature or the narrative of the bill, I had no expectations. I didn't know, but I was hoping that some of the funding would just come directly to the local governments as they did with ARPA funding. Unfortunately, after reading the bill, what I found was the vast majority of the funds are going to federal infrastructure projects, to the states, and a very small portion of them are going to be offered to local communities through a competitive grant process. Those grants or funding opportunities available to local communities will require a local match that will range anywhere between 20% to 25%. Money, again, is not guaranteed. It is a competitive process, and the states will not be doing a direct allocation to local governments, but again, a competitive process as well. So, any money's coming down to the states and they, they're going to decide how to process that money, and you know, the projects are going to be funded within those three categories. Next. So, within the three main focus areas, transportation is a big component of it, and what I did in getting ready for this presentation is I tailored it to local communities. I tailored it to Glen County local government to see where we could benefit moving forward. Next. Okay. So, within transportation, the first, the number one or the first priority is roads and bridges. So, what I did is of those 25 competitive processes that the federal government agencies are going to be offering, is I picked a few that I thought would be interest to the community, to our community. The first one is $4 billion off-system bridges that will be allocated to the states, and they will in turn manage it and turn around and offer it to local communities. Again, this will be a competitive funding process, and it's spelled out throughout the literature of the bill. The second one that drew my attention was the 7.5 billion for Rebuilding America Infrastructure Sustainability and Equitability. So, and some, the RACE Grant. This grant does require a 20% local match. It was just released in late January of 2021. It does have a due date of April 4th, 2022. Next. So, what this grant encompasses is funding for capital investments, primarily surface transportation improvements. It can range for planning projects, preparation, or construction grants. Grant applications requesting construction grants must show site readiness. For construction grants, the minimum they are requesting is for us to submit or for any applicant is $5 million, except for projects located in rural areas, that we can tailor that for up to $1 million. No, for a minimum of $1 million. Like I said previously, this grant does require a local cash match of 20%. And just looking at, you know, projects that are in need of repair or areas in need of repair for Glen County, I identify the Post Road Bridge and the Perry Road Bridge replacement projects that are on the list, meaning that we could potentially submit for a grant, for a planning grant of a minimum of $1 million to help do the planning phase of this grant to just get us to the construction phase and reapply next year for the construction part of this project, of both projects. So, again, these are other funding opportunities that drew my attention. Safe streets, safe streets and roads for all. This is going to be exclusively for local governments. I don't know yet if this is going to be funneled through the states or provided directly by the federal government. It seems like it will be funneled through the states, a competitive process, but this one is aimed to reduce crashes and fatalities. The next one is mega projects. The minimum is $5 million, and it needs to make a regional impact. So, any projects will need to make a regional impact. And the last one is the infra, which supports freights and highway projects of regional and national significance. So, what I did is I went ahead and printed a fact sheet of the 25 grants that are available now to local units of government for you to look at. I know time is of the essence. There you go. Thank you. So, I didn't want to take all of your time going through each and one of the grant opportunities, but I went ahead and printed them, and of the 25 grants available to local governments, these 25 are then divided into those three subcategories, which are the transportation, the energy and climate, and the broadband. So, if you look at your transportation grants, 10 are only offered to local governments, and within those 10, really what fits the bill for local communities, for what Glen County's trying to do, I think we can sum it up to probably about three or four. So, there is some limited access, I believe, unfortunately, to what this infrastructure bill will provide for. Unfortunately, that's the way it was tailored, that's the way it was built. So, right now, what communities are trying to do is trying to see what projects we have and see what's a good fit for these grant opportunities that are coming out. The timeline for the roads and bridges grants, again, the bill was passed in November 2021. The implementation guidebook was just released mid-January of 2022. The states received their allocations late January of '22, and the RACE Grant NOFO was released, the Notice of Funding. Where we are right now, between February and September of '22, various grant opportunities will be posted and released for communities to apply for, but right now, the one that I'm aware of that is immediately due and that is applicable to us is the RACE Grant, which is due April 14th of 2022. So, within the second category of funding for the infrastructure bill is the climate, energy, and the environment. This is intended to fund projects to offer clean energy and power, better water systems, resiliency, and environmental remediation. Next. In summary, this particular allocation for the infrastructure bill, these are some of the projects that would be eligible under this category, and some of the things that probably would be a good fit for Glen County is some of the environmental pollution sides comes to my, the EPA grant for the Brownsfield. Next. These are some of the grants available through that category. The BRIC Grant, which is available on an annually basis through FEMA, the Flat Mitigation Assistance, and again, the Brownsfield Remediation Program through EPA. The third and last is broadband. Again, this is a competitive grant process, and it's intended to provide reliable high-speed internet to various parts of the nation, and particularly those of living in rural communities. Next. These are some of the grants that are offered for broadband to local governments. So, the build.gov grant does provide some next steps to local communities, and those are embedded in the, in the printout that I just gave you. But in some, what they're asking local communities to do is prioritize your capital, your capital needs or your capital projects, make sure that you secure your local cash match in various forms, it could be SPOs or any other means, but really make sure that you can secure your local cash match. Be prepared if the grant is denied. Again, this is a competitive process. We can have a very worthy project, but again, we're going up against so many other communities, not just in the state of Georgia, but in the U.S. It also recommends to partner with other agencies. I plugged in the Coastal Regional Commission because that's who we work with, but it does recommend to work with other entities to help with administration of your capital projects. So, I summarized a lot of 400 pages, and I know in a few slides, but I was trying, trying to be mindful of your time, but I'm open to any questions.
Monica, what, I mean, you, how are you coordinating within the staff to look at these different programs that you've identified, so that everyone on the county understands, here's the, here are programs, you guys see where we can fit into some of these areas? Are you doing that actively? And then also, are you, besides the CRC, have you reached out to like 210 Sewer and Airport Commission and School Board, I assume, and kind of having some discussions with those folks about possibilities that we can partner on?
So, in regards to communicating with staff, what I did is I reached out to Public Works and just kind of see what the list of capital projects that they had for 2022, and from there, I was able to pull the bridge projects that were a good fit for RACE. So, a lot of this literature just came out, so I'm trying to match and fit the best that I can to our available project listing, meaning I want to make sure we have a competitive project when we go up against other communities. So, yes, I do have open lines of communication with Public Works. I haven't reached out to community development, but I'm happy to do that. Now, in regards to other agencies, I have not done that, primarily because I have been focusing on what can benefit Glen County, us, in this, in a very limited time that we have to prepare all these grants and leading up to the deadline.
And then, so, I think I saw something about cybersecurity for local governments as a grant in there. I mean, is that something we would coordinate with IT maybe and talk to them about maybe some of their needs that might apply to that grant?
Sure. That is an eligible cost under this bill, and it is, if something that is, the board wants me to pursue, I can. But again, anything that this bill touches will have a local cash match.
Do you have comments, gentlemen? We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
To go through all that, all those pages and to bring it forward, we do appreciate it. It's important work. So, thank you, Ms. Harden.
No problem. Yes, before I leave, and if the commission will allow me... Yes, before I leave, and if the commission will allow me, may I get a tentative approval to move forward with the RACE Grant? I know that we have identified, when I say we, staff identified those bridge projects, the Post and the Perry replacement projects. And I am on a tight deadline, so this is due April the 14th. I would suggest a planning grant. I did discuss it with Dave. It is not shovel-ready, so the planning grant would get us to the construction phase. We can apply for the construction grant in 2023, but for now, it was just, would be preliminary work, I'm sorry, with the CRC, just to see what we need to get and all the moving parts of this grant.
Gentlemen, any concerns with that?
No.
Can you just touch base with Mr. Stewart? It seems to be no concern on our end.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Ms. Thompson, item number three.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you know, you all are beginning discussions for a potential SPOST 22, and there was discussion about the option of potentially contracting with a project management company for that. We reached out to GUD Management Company, who currently manages capital projects for the Glen County Board of Education. Met with them to understand what types of services they can provide. They provided a professional oversight services proposal to you for the SPOST 22 and for the completion of SPOST 2016, different projects, if you were interested in that. You were given both of those proposals, and Mr. Samuelson and Mr. GUD are here this afternoon from the company. They're happy to answer any questions and let you know what they do. Basically, they really work individually with clients to give you the almost à la carte, the services that you need to help supplement your staff and get projects completed. And then they're happy to answer any questions, and I'll receive your direction on next steps.
Please invite them up, and they may want to speak to us. Commissioners, have y'all looked at their proposals? Y'all have any questions about it?
And this is Matt Samuelson coming up with GUD.
Matt, if you don't mind giving us just a brief overview of your proposals, do you have that in a slide form, or do we have that in a slide form?
I certainly will, and I can recall it to be able to. And thank you, Pam, and thank you, Commission, for an opportunity to be able to present to you. As Pam shared, we're an 18-year-old company that has been specialized in capital program and project management. We're Georgia-based. We have over 50 employees. We've worked on over $5 billion of SPOST-related project delivery and infrastructure and buildings, educational SPOSTs, infrastructure SPOSTs, and currently we're working on five active programs that represent about $1.5 billion annually. We prepared what we think is a fairly flexible and assistive services to you to support your efforts in consolidating what might be your 2022 proposition and referendum. We understand that there is, there are projects that were proposed in '21 that were not approved by referendum, and there is a status of review that's underway, and that we would come alongside and help further understand your deferred or unmet capital need and be able to synthesize that into a list and coming together for a project list out of your public listening sessions, synthesizing your public input, your specific district input, and then trying to give you good support and assessment in budget preparation and scope to budget type of alignment and avoid the typical pitfalls of what SPOST projects where maybe haven't been heard of need and don't have a clear path to delivery. And so we proposed a series of services that would be principally led and that we would come up within the 60 days and give you an update and report, and then be able to continue supporting your services to the time of referendum. Of course, we're available for expanded services and would be interested. As Pam said, we've supported the school board for over 12 years and four SPOSTs. We've had a very successful delivery there. There's been a good interchange, we believe, with the public and what they're accomplishing. But we have, what we've done is begun to get in and understand what we, what we don't really fully know. We understand briefly all of the items that you all have been trying to bring forward, and we're going to deep dive and understand what the needs of the community are and help you work alongside your staff, your AE departments and teams, and then assist in preparation for the commissioners of a comprehensive project list.
Okay.
We also, I'm sorry, we also prepared a series of services that can assist in your 2016 project completion. We have reviewed the projects. We understand that some are in construction and underway. Perhaps they don't need a lot of assistance. You have staff that's actively engaged. There are four that are in the process of approval that we could facilitate and offer assistance, and then four that are still in right-of-way acquisition that need to, and we have a specialty in that and can provide services to move them into the next phases of projects.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little bit further more about that, or any more detail about it?
About the 2016 projects or about the preparation list?
Yeah.
Yeah. What we've done is prepared Sam and I, Sam is our CEO and founder, and Sam and I come from a background, and again, we've been working in SPOST-related projects for over 30 years. Some of the first SPOSTs in the state of Georgia, we're very familiar with the legal requirements, and we want to come alongside. We have his, in my time, involved. We have two subject matter experts that we propose, both in assembling project lists. And then also, we have a CFO that has been a previous CFO for Douglas County and has prepared SPOSTs, or she had created the budgeting and the projections. And so we would come alongside, do financial review and assessment of where your unmet need projects are. We would deep dive into what your '21 projects were and where their budgets were and be able to bring them forward. And again, we would come alongside and listen to the listening sessions. We'd come and interview all of the district commissioners and understand the priorities and needs within your districts and try to interface and begin to synthesize that into a comprehensive list that can begin to be piloted with the public.
Okay. And you've done that currently, correct, or you've done that in other locations, localities?
We have. We've worked on over 15 large SPOST-related programs. We're currently working with the Department of Transportation on their $10 billion MMIP program. We're working with the City of Atlanta on their SPOST bond program. We're working with Fulton County Schools, Atlanta Public Schools, Glen County Schools. We've worked with Savannah and their transportation department. We have an office location in Savannah, but we are Atlanta-based.
Gentlemen, any questions, your thoughts?
Well, just a couple. You certainly come highly regarded by our local school architect.
Thank you. Had a great relationship and working with them.
Very impressed with what you do, have done for the school system here. And he was obviously involved in building schools, as you were here. We certainly have a more diverse plate than just building the building.
Absolutely.
And I specifically ask about the road projects, I mean, roundabouts and gateways and roads and bridges and all those sorts of things. And of course, he's, you could maybe give us some references of counties that you've worked for in putting in road projects, and I'm sure you have.
Sure, we have. Done so both in the private sector and large mixed-use developments, and also in the public sector, working directly for the municipalities. We're currently working with the City of Atlanta on that, on a $400 million bond referendum that is SPOST-supported, and it's all horizontal infrastructure. So intersection improvement, signage, pedestrian environment, utility improvement and relocation, park and public space enhancement. And of course, there are always some administrative-related buildings or vertical buildings that can be included in those. We have, we have reviewed what your '21 project list was and saw that there was approximately $35 million in buildings, and the balance of the 69 million was in horizontal. Very familiar with those types of projects. Understand the limitations and challenges of right-of-way acquisition, what happens in being able to create a strategy to acquire that so the projects can begin really being designed and move into an execution phase. But we're planners, we're, we're project managers, and we're construction managers. And so we understand the process comprehensively and taking projects from a concept to execution of all markets and sectors. We're currently working with MARTA, as I said, GDOT, the City of Atlanta. We previously did the transportation work for the City of Savannah, but those are all horizontal and heavy infrastructure-related programs.
Could you share with us what you shared when you were here before on the background credentials of you with the GUD?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the other members that were here with them.
Great, great. So Sam was, and I were with Beer's Construction, which was a preeminent southeast-based builder. And in 2005, Sam left that after running three of their business units, particularly their federal sector, a lot of justice, a lot of infrastructure-related projects, their education sector, and that's really how our firm has such a strength in those types of markets. I've worked with Sam for over 25 years. Our tenure averaged in our company is over 10 years. Our employees generally focus on high controls related and professional services, so we're an elevated group. We're a fairly flexible and unique group that we can range from small municipalities up to large metro municipalities. And we had with us that day a design review manager that is currently managing a $500 million program for the Fulton County Schools. We had Dr. Steve Salmon, who has been working with Glen County Schools for the entirety of the 12 years. And Steve has been responsible for preparing their lists in each of the SPOSTs, doing the projections for the revenue. And then we have, we have been pleased that we have had great accuracy in those and delivery, but that's not because of luck of the draw. It's a science in being able to develop a successful projection and projecting your revenues and understanding how we can marry a program that would be successful in delivery.
Some of you came from engineering backgrounds.
Absolutely. Construction, so sure. So I'm a civil engineer by background. We have, we have professionally-registered architects. We have professionally-registered civil engineers and structural engineers and mechanical engineers. We are construction managers. We have a fairly high focus on our tenured field-level supervision. So if your staff needs augmentation in managing projects, we have folks that have been in the field and manage those on a day-to-day basis. So we are truly a group of planning expertise on a project assembly and strategy expertise, and then into execution services, and all have a specialty in whatever discipline that they, that they provide.
So you, y'all are project managers?
We are.
So you have boots on the ground every day throughout the project?
Yes, there is, there was a question. We've offered a flexible service to support that right now, if that would be something that you're looking for. I know that you have a staff that is currently providing management, but we've provided some augmentation, and yes, in that role and construction management, we are boots on the ground on a day-to-day basis.
Support of education pay out on an annual basis?
That's been flexible. We, one of the, I think the benefits of our company is that we really don't want to prescribe a level-set service. What we have done is we've managed, when we begin, we do the work effort that's required to begin that service, and then we've tapered off. We don't currently manage their projects boots on the ground. So we have had fluctuating programs that at times our annual services have been over $300,000 and at times they've been down under $100,000, depending on where the state of the program is spent.
Do y'all provide construction estimates as well?
We do, we do.
Add just a couple things. There was a question about, as it related to transportation and the amount of horizontal and infrastructure work that we do. Currently, this year, over 60% of our work will be on the horizontal side in terms of managing the infrastructure work, most of it on the transportation side. Matt alluded to what we do with DOT. There, we're working as, on the master program management deal, which is really roughly $20 billion if you look at it over the course of a 10-year period. Now, we're working on that with a huge team. There are a number of program managers involved in that. We're not over the entire thing, but we're over a good portion of it. Likewise, I heard something as related to the boots on the ground and what we're doing for Glen County Schools. We offer full program management and planning. With Glen County Schools, we went through a, initially, we went through a competitive process for full-blown program management, and we were successful at that, and that's actually been about 15 years ago. And when we came onboard with Glen County Schools, you know, we like to bring value to our clients, and you know, we don't believe that, you know, one size fits all. So as we got to know Glen County and we assessed their needs, we determined that what they needed more so than program manage, full-blown program management, was what we refer to as oversight and accountability management. And that's what we've been providing for them, I guess, the last three SPOSTs. But that first SPOST, we were providing full-blown program management, and we were, oh geez, I hate to go from memory. It's not as good as it used to be, but we were probably up to anywhere from 3/4 of a million or so per year. But as we've reduced that level of services, it's much less than that now. In terms of what we proposed for you here today, it's a two-step process, and Matt talked about that somewhat. What we were looking at is a 60-day period where we've really come in and get to know you and understand exactly what your needs are. And once we get to the end of that 60-day period, at that point, we'll understand exactly what needs to happen to get you across the finish line as it relates to the vote in November, and you know, what your constituents are looking for and what everyone in the community is looking for in order to make this thing successful. And that, at that point, will determine exactly what services need to be provided to get you across that finish line. As it relates to the projects that were remaining from your 2016, perhaps you'll need some boots on the ground. We weren't looking at full-blown boots on the ground. I think we broke that up into, you have eight projects, there are four that have yet to begun, to began, and we were going to look at what we could do there in terms of some oversight, and that's what's in front of you now.
That's good.
You ever built a roundabout?
Yes. Building one right now in Fort Worth, Texas. So we, 135-foot diameter and two-lane, and so very familiar with what they involve, what they provide, what they challenge in pedestrian flow, and so, no, we know very well there.
Let me ask you regarding the '22 list. We've got a, it's got to be approved or to the Board of Education probably around the 1st of August, so they can have a meeting and vote on it by August 8th. So I think if we were to back that up, our list would probably need to be finished no later than the 15th of July. And I guess with the timing that we have right now towards the middle, you know, we've got about four or five months here, maybe five at the most, can you, can you get us there by the July if we were to engage you guys to help us refine our list and provide the cost estimates and whatnot?
Yeah, it's, it's upon you. I think you all, as a commission, know that. But yes, we can, but it's something that needs to begin, and I think that your calendar is doing that. You're still cultivating information from the constituency, but the projects need to start being synthesized and vetted, and it can be done.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank my fellow commissioners and the management team for moving in this direction. Been a lot of discussion of how SPOST could come forth successfully to meet the critique by our constituents and also efficiencies. Anything we Anything we do here in the county pretty much involves wetlands. And that means CORV engineers, DNR, DOT. And these items alone today, especially since Biden took office, the policies have changed so that it's almost reprehensible to do a timely due diligence for the way we've normal done things in the past. And that has been a proven failure, I think. Not disrespect to any of the partners and participants, but you can't expect staff to step up and take on the power of those demands when our economy, building economy is ripping ahead full steam. Those policies have changed. You need people that understand how to work and have relationships with CORV engineers, with those agencies. And those rules are, even as we speak, are in modification, just on simple projects. And you got to have somebody that knows how to do that. And that, again, is not on one person. The feedback from our community in the beginning was one of the things you need to do to cure the ills of SPOLOST or is project management. So the commission debated around project management in the sense of, okay, staff really can't be encumbered with that. They don't have the widespread expertise, the time. And we looked at a manager concept, a specialized guy that would come in and be a manager. And I think it goes back again too, when you're talking about the size of projects, the technical aspects of projects, that one person couldn't fill that position effectively in what we're looking for. So the commission, I think consensus has brought you forth with the real valid realization that having a management firm that can disperse the assignments, the skill sets, and everything to help all these different projects move timely. Environmental delays were a part of SPOLOST 2016, setbacks which creates expense and cost. Then you have in every SPOLOST, especially road projects, you have right-of-way acquisition issues, not just federal or state permitting, but you have those acquisitions. And you got to have somebody that's bulldogging that because those acquisitions can sit out there. And of course, owners of property are wanting to hold off to get the best deal, but you can't just have a casual conversation every six months to say, all right, where do we stand, what can we do?
Right.
We got to be making progress. And you can't begin the road. And then there's another thing that people forget. Money, you put a project list forth, that doesn't mean the money's available. That means the money, if approved, will start to come in.
Right, has to be allocated.
And you have to wait till that money comes in to be able to do the things that you want to do. All of those things, and the size of Glen County's issues and needs have vastly increased since when I was on the commission a while back and I sat over two SPOLOSTs. But now the demands are much wider and we've seen the failures in 2016 SPOLOST, which is best effort for all the partners involved, but the failures, and we see the shortfalls. So I commend that this is the way to go, to engage a team and move this forward. And now, you know, yes, we're behind. We have to say we're behind because when Brunson was onboard, they submitted, and Wayne was onboard, and David, they had a SPOLOST 2020 type of list ready to go forward in deference to incoming commissioners and other projects.
Well, it's also COVID primarily.
Right, and COVID. That SPOLOST was set back. And, you know, now, all of these projects, we kind of all have been discussing them for the year, but it's time to put the brick and mortar together and one person as a project manager is not going to be able to meet those timetables. So I just commend my commission. I'm glad that.
Your observations are very, very key and astute. We're in an unprecedented time with inflation of dollars of construction cost. We're in a regulatory enhancement that, as you said, is being figured out. And I also want to say, we have a breadth of experience. We're also not one-stop. We need resources at times that we pull in. We know where to go for those. We are a point person. We have a broad base and bench. We have a lot of expertise, deep. We're not a global company so that you actually can talk to principals and get response. I think that's what some of the success of our client at the Board of Education is known. We speak to them and they can see their input translate into the program. But we also know what it takes to live within the regulatory compliance and get to a finish line and execute projects and move things along. And that's what I think our size and shape of company would provide the greatest benefit to you with.
I think, go ahead. What are some of the regulatory issues then? If the climate is so?
Yeah, you have a, right now, you have a series of funding streams. So whether it be LMIC monies from the state in transportation-related projects, or if it's local dollars, all of the pieces that you have to fund other entities out of your SPOLOST collection. You know, this is a pretty complex process that your comments are heard. You have a day-to-day job as staff and commissioners. And so now, when you add this requirement on, it's a great funding source. It's a great way to execute projects, but it has a lot of elements that have to be looked after, have to be followed. So primarily, funding, reporting, as you said, acquisition right-of-way and permitting in environmental and in any kind of state and local regulatory.
Yeah, I guess I was trying to get to what's different. SPOLOST has always had those things, correct?
They do. I just think that the, I think that the market has become harder to engage and buy services in the market. I think that, you know, your experience is right now happening in every other municipality or every other program. It's difficult to get the attention. So if a project doesn't have all of it well organized and well-defined, it often gets put behind other projects that are active and in front of that. And so for us, it's a matter of definition and getting a clean procurement, getting a budget that was an expectation to align to an estimate that comes in so the project can advance because right now, there's just resource limitation in every avenue.
I think, go ahead, Mike.
Matt, I was just going to ask, do you all work with other funding sources to supplement the SPOLOST? Like, you know, Monica brought up this grant. I know it's all competitive and everything, but.
We do, we do. On the way down, I was on a telephone call with the city of Covington and Newton County government where we're looking at the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority for a grant and loan application to come alongside monies that they had already received in a grant, and that can bridge some private. And so we do, we're very, you know, Sam and I are humble to say, but we've been working in this state for quite some time and we know the direction for program dollars, that are things that are happening both at the state level, at the federal level. And then we also know how to access those through relationship and the presentation of how it's beneficial. It's a process. It's not, as your staff said, it's not just a clean line to deliver. You have to know where to go.
I would say more often than not, most programs have multiple funding sources. I'm trying to think of a program that we've been involved in where there was a single funding source, and I can't think of one. So that's not unusual. It's typical that there are multiple funding sources. And the value of having us is to account for all of those various funding sources as even right down to the individual projects. And you asked the question, you know, what's changed now? I would say a couple of things. You know, I don't want to get into politics, but the current administration will probably be a little more dogmatic about the way some of the regulations are enforced. Also, I would say constituents around the world, not just here in Glen, around the country, not just here in Glen County, but are becoming more involved and sophisticated as it relates to, okay, well, we're paying taxes, we want to know where our dollars are going. You know, not only the project in my backyard, but the project on the other side of town. So those are the things that are changing.
One of the things I'd point out to us as a commission, Mr. Stewart brought to my attention that there's currently 80 different capital-type projects in the process in Glen County, either through planning, right-of-way. Those, that includes the 12 remaining SPOLOST projects that we have from 2016. So the comment has been made, which is, our staff has an everyday job, and those jobs are keeping them very busy as well as we have asked them in the last several years to take on finishing these very complex SPOLOST projects. I hope, you know, we really strongly consider looking at using good in regard to our project list planning for the 20 SPOLOST that we hope to offer to the people, to the citizens, as well as have some serious discussions about bringing them on as the actual project managers for those projects. I think there's a lot of value in the fact that they would be involved from the very beginning, to begin with the estimates, and then be able to take it forward from the point if it were to be passed by the citizens. And so I think you guys have the information on it. I'll be circling back with all of you and we'll get you some information back very quickly.
We appreciate that. We appreciate the commission's time and questions, and we're available to answer any that come back. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, item number four, proposed timeline for the finalization of Vision Glen zoning update.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you're aware, we contracted with TSW to provide a comprehensive update to our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations in January of 2019. It's currently February of 2022. We, that contract, the board at the time, did allow for a lot more. They wanted at least a two-year process to allow for citizen input. That input did happen. It also took shape during COVID and happened in ways that aren't typical public input. That being said, in October of 2021, we brought this board, the potential, the draft policy solutions document. You all looked at that and directed staff and TSW to start drafting the ordinance and also asked us to come back with a firm timeline of when this project can be completed. So we have taken your direction and have provided this project timeline to you. Please look at it. Let us know if you have any questions or comments or want to change anything. Once you give us the consensus on this, this will be the timeline that is followed and would not be changed without your direct vote or direction from a majority of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, any comments or questions about this?
You already know my comment.
Well, you want to make it public?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, for one thing, I don't think stakeholders have had a chance to look at it, for one thing. And I don't know who was on the first round of the Comprehensive Steering Committee. I don't know who that was. That was an old, the old commission. I think that needs to be looked at. I also think we can draft it this year, but I don't think September 1st, maybe October.
And you wanted some more time for what, just out of curiosity?
I want, I want the public to have input. I also want the stakeholders to have input there.
Ms. Thompson, in that, where do the stakeholders have input?
The planning commissions, I don't think have seen it yet.
Um, yes, sir. And Commissioner Rafalski, to explain what the process was, we got a whole lot of input on the front end to get, to get the approach that would be done. For example, did the community want less regulation? Aesthetics on St. Simons, did they want more regulation? Did they want the same amount? Or did I want less?
Was that the things they held at the first Fridays?
They held them at first Fridays. We did a virtual town hall that had over 1,200 people attend. We put out a survey that had over 1,000 people. We did actually hold in-person town halls, both on the mainland and the island. And I'm happy to get you the number of attendees and the feedback from every one of those events, and that's currently available on our website.
I think I went to those. I just, I just feel like we don't need to push it through as quickly. It needs to be done.
Commissioner Rafalski, I'm not trying to push anything through y'all.
No, I know, I know.
I'm responding to a request.
I requested for her to put together a very tight timeline, so to bring to you guys for discussion. So if we want to have a discussion about it, now's the time to kind of have that discussion.
And you're right, nobody has seen the actual draft language because we needed y'all to give guidance on the policy solutions and the policy approaches before we spent all that time drafting them. So no one's, none of y'all, no stakeholders, no former comp plan committee, no user groups have seen that. So absolutely, you're correct in saying that. And so the proposal was to give each of those groups six weeks to look at it, get that comment back from them, and then the document with those comments would then go to both planning commissions, who for this update were directed by the former board to be the stakeholder groups. They would then provide their own input before it came to you all.
So is the document done?
It's in draft.
It's in draft, okay. So it can go to the planning commissions, it can go to the stakeholders?
Our proposed way to do it, if you give it to every, if you give version one to everybody at one time, they're going to all mark it up and you're not going to be able to compare those comments and have everybody looking at the same document. So you give version one to the county staff, the development design industry professionals, and the Envision Glen Comprehensive Plan Committee. You let those three groups look at it, and you see that's the week of March 28th. Look at that, get all those comments back, assimilate all those so that by the time you get to version two, everybody's looking at the same document. Because as soon as you put three copies out there and let 30 people mark them up, it's going to be very hard to then compare comments and give y'all a list of what those comments are because one, I'm sorry, there's a lot of noise from the audience. It's hard for me to hear y'all. All those comments, even if we put them on a chart, y'all may have to make decisions because y'all may have three or five different comments on one ordinance that we need your direction on what final draft to put through. So this is suggested in that order so that all the comments can be documented and orderly so that by the time each group is looking at it, that by the time the planning commissions looked at it, the technical committee, which are the actual architects that'll be drawing the plans, the actual engineers that'll be designing the plans, they've already looked at it from their point of view.
And they're in the group that we receive at March 28th?
Yes, sir.
And, but their comments are due back by April 18th?
They're, it's six weeks. I would need to pull out my phone to.
Comments on all B1 drafts?
April 25th.
So that's, that's less than 30 days, so that doesn't quite, quite make the six weeks. And that's part of why, you know, I'd asked when we were looking at this to, for them to have at least 60 days to look at it. Now. Can we have a list of who they are?
What were you saying, how many did?
Sixty.
Trying to get to.
Yes, sir, we can because they have.
And who's on the Envision Glen Comprehensive Plan Committee?
Yes, sir. The committee doesn't exist. It sunsetted with the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Chairman O'Quinn asked me to contact them and invite them all back and invite them to review that document if they want to. I haven't done that yet because we're not to the timeline part where they get that document. As soon as we have that version draft, then I can absolutely give you the list of the original committee members that we're inviting to take another look at it. Same for the technical group. I don't know who they are yet. I can tell you I'm compiling a list of who are the biggest users of our zoning ordinance and our system. And then part of what Chairman O'Quinn and I spoke about informing this schedule was, I want to send it to them and give them six. schedule was, I want to send it to them and give them six weeks so that they can look at it. If their timeline doesn't allow, they may not be able to give input. Again, this is for the seven of you to decide, and we'll make the changes and move forward accordingly.
I would like, would like the stakeholders to be able to have 60 days to look at it. With today's work environment, everybody is slammed, they're not going to be able to lay down the everyday work and be able to just pay attention to this, this is comprehensive documentation. That, that's my suggestion.
Pam, if we were able to push your, on, give them, give them the document on the 28th and do May 30th?
May 30th is Memorial Day.
And I'm just talking about, if we backed everything up instead of from the 25th, give it another, by Memorial Day, that they return their comments back from the stakeholders?
And I don't think the public meeting needs to be online. I think they need to be like a town hall, where you actually see people, because...
Oh, you don't need that meeting?
Why not? Why not?
I'd be glad to.
I don't, I don't mind getting things thrown at me. I've got darts in me now.
So let me ask this, Commissioner Rafalski, because the, the thought of this was that we could allow people to submit written comments, so I think if you do that in public, I mean in person, that's fine, that would be almost like an all-day or a half-day town hall, where we would have the consultants and staff sitting at a table, and people could come in and provide individual comments, and we still also have an email address they could email comments to.
So maybe, maybe do two of those if you want to do them online?
Two online events?
Two of the public meetings online.
A one, two, two public meetings, one?
Yeah, yeah. Because if you don't advertise it, you don't see what, you see how it is.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rafalski, actually, for the online, I think it was this plan, we actually rented one of the slots at the end of the causeway on Fendig Daily, and had our website there with, you know, the survey, and got very good response. So we will absolutely do all the advertising we can.
Well, I think part of the problem is it sat on the shelf.
Yes, sir, it did.
It's stagnant, and everybody's mind. And I think the consensus, what you hear from the group, is there needs extended time. I mean, you've got up there, I'm just saying, comments on version one, and then online to version one, well, you've got a month kind of in there extended. But what, really, where you want to be by the time you have version two is pretty much close to a finished package, and, you know, and then you don't want a lot of public reaction then, you want to have had your public reaction and gotten there, so, you know, I just, I agree, it needs, have a little bit of spacing.
I would also recommend that we do it more than at the foot of the causeway.
Absolutely.
We need to have something maybe on Altama, at, at that digital sign, maybe, maybe one other place. It does involve the entire county.
I know this has been going on for, what, three years?
Since January of 2019.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to be a cog in the wheel, but I think it's too important just to not take all the input we can get. That, that's my, that's my take.
Well, I certainly agree. I think, you know, just having a defined timeline, and that's what we're trying to work on here, is imperative to getting through the process. And I, I don't think, I mean, we can direct Pam to go back and, and back up everything 30 days, so that the April 25th comments on all B1 drafts are due by May 30th, and we could do that, couldn't we?
Absolutely.
So that would give you the 60 days you were talking about, Mr. Neal. Or even if you want to go into the, or June 15th, we can do that.
Well, I believe firmly that we need a timeline, and let's, let's get it done. I just want to make sure that we've got time for the comments, and so backing it, backing it up to 30 days and then...
Back entire calendar up, and then on the, back the entire calendar up a month, and then on the public meeting, have two online meetings and one in-person meeting?
And not the entire calendar. We're talking about, you're going to roll it out on, on March the 28th.
Yes, sir.
But all comments wouldn't be due until May 30th, and then it would move forward, you know, from there down.
When will the planning commission see these?
The planning commission is technically the stakeholder group for this contract, so they would see it before it comes to you. So they would, right here, it says mid-July presentation to the joint planning commissions. So if this whole thing's pushed back a month, that would be August, mid-August, and then it would come to you.
I still think we can get it done this year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I just think we need to get all, all, all the input we can from the builders, from the architects, from the public.
So if I can, if it's okay, if I can review these changes, and then, yes, sir?
Let me ask you something else, Pam, you've been involved in this for a long time, and I know you've got an accelerated schedule up there. Where, where do you think effectively for the public to weigh in again from a cold document and kind of energize, where do you see the, in the pathway, the most crucial time to really get that engagement?
Commissioner Fendig, that's...
Before you answer that, you said yourself in conversations we've had, that it would be very easy to go after their low-hanging fruit first, and you could probably get more done in the first 30 days, just eliminating those, those types of zoning problems. And then it gets, it's going to get more complicated as it kind of, as it gets further down to the end of the July deadline. So I think you could probably get rid of two-thirds of the problems in the first 30 days, just with what you had told me, low-hanging fruit that's out there that should come off the books.
Yes, sir, there's definitely, it, it depends on how you all choose to address this. The draft is written as one new zoning ordinance, and it's got all the changes in it, and it's a lot of changes, and some of it are very simple changes, just technical definitions. Currently, if you have a pet rabbit, we don't technically say you can have a pet rabbit, things like that, along with very major changes. I mean, do y'all want to change and require aesthetic design guidelines on the island? So do y'all want to tackle that as one document, or do y'all want to break it apart and have it come to you as multiple segments of, of a document? And y'all can do that either way. So that's a very good point, is once you get to this draft and get to version two, and we see what kind of comments you all have gotten, I think it will be good to bring it back to y'all and say, here's where we are. How do you want to, to tackle the actual adoption of it?
Well, I would hate to see the adoption overall fail because of a few complicated aspects of it, where, as Commissioner Thompson said, there's some low-hanging easy fruit, so maybe a multiple-stage adaptation might be the...
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Might be the, the way, just so that we can get it done. And, and, you know, if, if there's something that's going to cause debate and division, we can work that out, you know, still this year, I mean, but...
If I might, if we go ahead and get this done, couldn't we amend it at some other point if we missed something?
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, we've been at this a long time.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I agree, we should, we need more input, and, and really, and I don't know how you do this, is to make it understandable for, for working people who don't have a lot of time to digest this stuff, but will, it, it real impact them. So the language, I'm hoping, will be plain enough and not too technical. But, but my thing is, yeah, let's, let's do all of that, but, you know, if we miss something, then we just have to fix it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and those are very good points. Yes, we've tried to take complicated language out of it. We've tried to add things that are best practices and zoning ordinances to help make it easier to understand and adhere to. And Commissioner Fendig, to your question, the best point, the consultant has been saying it, and I know y'all haven't been on the board since 2019, is that the reason they suggested giving it to the technical group is because those are the people actually drawing the plans or actually applying that code to real projects in the field, and you want their technical expertise. Yes, we have a lot of citizens who love to give input on technical items. You want the citizen to see a technical comment or requirement that an architect or engineer or surveyor has already said, yes, we can do that. We don't want to have made some kind of change that they say we can't actually apply this. So we want those technical changes, those comments made and potential changes suggested before we give it to the general public, so that what they're looking at is a document that our user groups have said, this looks like it'll work, this will work. Because at the end of the day, we need a zoning ordinance that can work and actually be applied. And I appreciate the concern of some of the board, of, of the board to finish it up this year. We are ready and willing, and the consultant's ready and willing, to finish it whenever you like, with as much public input as you like. So can you just tell us when you...
So the professional group that you're talking about, is that March 28th?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, I remind everybody, the current zoning ordinances were written in the 70s, I believe.
66, and then we had a pretty big update in 83.
83.
So forty years old.
Forty years old. They've been amended along the way.
You can't rush something that's forty years old, to me.
Well, be dead.
I'm obviously got that most time, but...
Well, I'd just say, it's, I think we all agree that it's, we need to keep moving on it and keep it in front of us, and let's get through it, and you've heard our comments. If you'll revise that, but we, the March 28th date, we want to keep, and we want to move everything back to the 30th. You'll start putting that together and circle it back to us, I appreciate it.
I, I will, and in the meantime, we'll, as far as like any other internal reviews and getting to it, it never hurts to get it later. We just, once this is approved, staff and the consultant are committing to you all that we are meeting this schedule, unless y'all take public action to tell us otherwise. So I can go back and give some no-later than dates to make sure that, to give you the full window that y'all have for public input while still meeting the goal of getting it adopted this calendar year.
And so you'll be able to provide that to us by next meeting? Do you need a vote on, by, on, by, when do you need to vote? By, by the 28th of March? I mean, when do you need our...
We're, we're working on this, so I don't need a vote right now, because all you're doing is relaxing the schedule. I can try very hard to get it to the Thursday meeting for your information. I think March 3rd would be when I could get it to you.
Okay, well, let's see if we can do that. Get it, get it back, let's review it, and if everybody's in agreement, we can go forward.
I'd just like to know who's on the design development, who's on...
I'll, I will provide a suggested list of that.
I want to see that list, please.
And I'd very much like to see them get advance notice that, that they can expect this on the 28th.
Save the date, it's coming?
Kind of thing, absolutely.
It's sort of the save the date right now, though.
Yeah, just to, to inform them that it's coming, we're going to need your input. Please, please allow some time to, to...
Well, I think it's a, it's a save the date for the community, and that's the reason why Pam's come forward to bring it to us and let the community know, and I agree. Let's, to all groups that may possibly be involved, let's get some information out to them that the 28th is when, of March, is when we will see those, that information going out, so I agree.
We will do that, and absolutely, any, any time, any time we have something, in addition to those designated stakeholder groups or user groups or the joint planning commissions, if you ever get a call from a citizen that says they can't find the draft online, or they can't find this or that, email myself or Stephanie, and we'll email them a copy of the draft that day. We're not wanting in any way to restrict public input, we're just trying to set milestones that we can meet to keep this moving forward to the finish line.
So when, when did you say the planning commissions will see it?
Uh, the proposal was July 18th, but assuming 30 days on that would be August. Well, the, the, they are designated as the stakeholders, so we wanted them to see the input, that, I mean, they can, I can send everybody a copy on March, I just don't know how many times they want to read it, if it's going to have two other versions before it gets to them for their input, and we want them to be able to see what the community had to say about it, because they're part of the filter of y'all hitting those comments.
But maybe move it from July to May. I, I think that's...
July to May?
Well, well, just, just when the, I don't think the planning commissions should see it when it's damn near done, because suppose there's something that needs to be changed?
I think they're going to have recommendations in which they're going to make, they're going to make some, some final recommendations to us.
Well, here's one thing...
Is that correct, Pam?
Yes, sir.
Here's one thing to look at, is when you're hitting the, basically, the finish of draft one on June 13th, you're right back into July 4th and July 18th. Everybody's on vacation during that time, you know, away, it's not the focus of what's going on, so maybe the gap of time right in there really needs to come, to move that back a little bit from, you know, he provides the draft, okay, July 4th, but let's, let's give the public some time when you've got that second version draft, you know, not right in the middle where everybody's on vacation.
Yes, sir, and if you like, by March 3rd, I can give you a zoning schedule for y'all to give me the consensus to move forward and target, and at every milestone or every work session, I can stand up here like we do with the SPOSS and tell you, we hit that milestone, here's where we are today, and y'all can tell me every month, you know, like you're saying, Commissioner Fendig, do you make allowances for the Fourth of July holiday? Or what, what the next step is?
Well, I think you, you've heard from the board, go back, compile it all, and, and try to get us back, maybe by Thursday or Friday, and relay us some ideas, and we'll review it, and we'll keep moving towards the, the March 3rd kind of adoption.
Of course.
Thank you, Pam, we appreciate it.
I'm not going anywhere, gentlemen.
All right, five is approval of design for Dungeness Drive traffic improvement. Who is handling that? You, okay?
Yes, sir. This was put together by county engineer Paul Andrews. As you know, this was a SPOSS 2016 project. Quick summary, Shelton, if you could go to the next slide, please. So the original design that was considered for this wound up not being able to work because of the sale of some properties and not being able to acquire right-of-way for any reasonable cost. So in January 2021, the board at the time was presented a second alternative to extend South Park, South Port Parkway to US 17. If you'll go to the next slide, we can see that visually. As you see, that's where we were just going to have South Port go straight out and hit 1782. You all liked that. We gave it to Georgia DOT, they did not like that. So what they did...
They brought that to us.
No, they brought the next one to us. They took that model and built on it and gave us what they think is a preferred method. If you'll go to the next slide, please, Shelton. This basically does three things. I think it'll be easier to show you the picture on the next slide. They're going to take the South Port and run it straight out there to where 17 turns, re-stripe that area, and then at 8217 intersection, provide some additional turn lane and striping there. You got a pointer? Can y'all pass down the pointer for Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, because I, I'm lost.
Yeah, we went west, ran out of water.
All right. So the first suggestion from them is to have additional turning lanes on this intersection, so that you're ultimately directing the traffic in this area to come out here, take the right here, there'll be additional striping and lanes here to take this right, to then additional striping and turn lanes here. So DOT's suggestion is instead of trying to do something here or direct people back here, to make it more convenient and easier for everybody to come out this way and take these rights to get where they're going.
We really think that people leaving the school on pickup is going to do a 270-degree...
Shelton, if you'll go to the next picture. Okay, so this is that intersection where the first left turn would occur, and you see the additional striping here that DOT thinks will make that intersection more attractive to use. If you'll go to the next one, Shelton, please. This is the additional striping now here, and you see extending this turn lane to have more stacking area for people to then make that right. And the last slide, that's the design they've given us. It would be accomplished in all DOT right-of-way. We would, of course, pay for the work, but we would not have any acquisition issues. DOT likes it, so they would, it wouldn't be difficult to permit. If you like this concept, then staff would bid it out, prepare the detailed engineering to get permitting and begin construction. Your alternate that we didn't write... Your alternate that we didn't write on the slide today is you can tell me you're not happy with it and we can go back to DOT and come back with another one.
You'll be able to move faster, you're saying you'll be able to go where you want to go. That's, that's what it looks like.
My first job in local government was in Roswell, Georgia, and a lady got us everywhere in Roswell by making right turns. She did it.
FedEx does it.
So, so what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want us to move forward with this design or do you want us to go back to DOT and try to see-
How long will it take you to go back to DOT and just say that we feel like this isn't a workable solution, we need something else?
We can go back to DOT in two weeks, it's gonna, either we'll need to pay for a new design or, or figure out a new design or they'll come up with a new design. This design took over six months to a year to get to us from DOT.
I just don't understand why the SPOLOST company, oh my, I'm going to hell.
Yeah, this is SPOLOST 2016 project, right?
It is, yes, sir.
God, what a tough decision.
Um, gentlemen?
I need about five minutes to think about this.
We were thinking, they, they wanted to go through, there was an old building right there.
I, I don't know.
Now, that being said, we can go back to that original plan and go back, the last offer, the last suggestion we had to acquire that right-of-way was to pay for it and demolish that building and build a new one.
We can't go parallel to that building, that, that property that's right there?
Sheldon, can you go back to the, there, there you go.
Which building is it?
This one, right there.
Right here, there was, there was talk at one point to try to go right here.
Yep. Why can't we come right down, parallel to that building? Why can't we acquire that land to come out right there at the driveway?
I don't know that the answer is that we can't, the answer is what resources that would cost and the desire of the board to do that as a solution.
I think we should look at that personally.
And, and that wouldn't involve the DOT?
It would not.
The guy that had the building here was just wanting an astronomical price for his building.
He wanted us to tear down a building, now, not the original owner, but we weren't able to acquire before that property changed hands.
The building is on one tax parcel, is that sort of triangle piece there?
Yes, sir.
Is it a different tax parcel or is it owned by the same guy?
It's owned by the same guy, although I do believe it's a different parcel.
That's completely-
Okay, so if y'all could give County Engineer Paul Andrews and I a month, we can pull these plans back out, come up with, re-verify what's in the field today and come to y'all at your next work session with what we think it would take to make this design happen again and let you look at that.
And I'd like to talk to some of the constituents out there and I'd like to talk to some of these commercial property owners and get their thoughts on this, so that would give me an opportunity to do that.
Okay, would you like our department to assist you in setting up that meeting? Or you're just going to go right out there and talk to them?
I'm just going to go out and visit them, I'm not going to get them off the doors.
Okay.
All right, well, we've, we've got a plan for number five, number six, we've received the 2016 SPOLOST update list. Remind the commissioners, we have a four o'clock meeting right after this here, so, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir, I'm waiting for my good friend and coworker, Mr. Dave Austin, to come up.
You're on the clock. He could, he could read that all fast enough.
First slide, good afternoon, commissioners, first slide, no change, we'll get the IFB up to purchasing in March, that's the last part of our alimony. Next slide.
This Phase 1 is complete and we're moving to get those out.
Get those out.
To bid.
Okay. Next slide, just talked about that.
Dungeoness, we just talked about, you'll see us again next month.
Frederick Road Under Construction, they are having some challenges with box culverts, construction of box culverts and transportation of box culverts, so that is slowing that down. They're also having some trouble with some concrete pipe, the metal and concrete pipe has to be USA, procured in USA because this goes through a state right, right away, and so that's presenting some challenges, but we've already got the silt screen up and they're going to start some clearing.
This has been awarded and we're working on getting everything lined up to issue the notice to proceed. This one is awarded, we're working with, to get this one to proceed, and then we also are working on getting some utilities relocated.
Allen Owens is making his way south, slowly but surely, we hope to finish it by the end of March.
This is part of the CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant and we should know by the end of this month if we have, are awarded that. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I always call this one FLETCY. We have a meeting at FLETCY this Friday to finalize the coordination needed between the two groups to get this project moving forward.
And just noted, they're the ones that have held that project up.
Forward progress is happening as we speak, Mr. Stewart reached out to some of them and he's attended the meeting with us this Friday. These drainage improvements, the first package, we worked with GWES to do, those are going to be out to bid in the next week or two and that will be through March and then construction through September. Hornet Drive and South Palm, we've spoken to y'all, those two projects have been added together. There is one property that is having some, outside of us, it's having some ownership issues and I believe Mr. Willbanks is going to update y'all on that soon, that that is pushing the ability to close on that one project left. The designs are ready and ready to hit the road, but it will be, our attorney believes at least more than three months, so we didn't want to put the project out to bid that far in advance. And this is, that's, those two are combined together, those two projects.
All right, thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, we'll take a break, reconvene here a little before four o'clock and adjourn for the-